Well, I expected a second down there when I got here. It's a whole lot of nothing.
Yeah. There's all these people we were expecting.
I know. Well, I guess better to plan for it and not have it than the other way around.
Did they let you come in the first?
No, but I drove past from it and it was... I was planning on it.
Okay.
I didn't try.
Yeah.
I thought I'll be a good employee and do what they tell me to do.
Yeah, I've heard they won't let you in.
Really?
They're gonna be trying to be a good employee. But I don't know.
All right. Good afternoon. We call this meeting to order. This is the budget evaluation team's special meeting of Tuesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty. Notice the meeting was properly posted on Thursday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty. Item number one, we have a... I guess we'll do a roll call before item number one, sorry. Let's see here. Ms. Martins?
Present in person.
Mr. Morrison?
Present in person.
Mr. Davidson? In person. Mr. Lambert? Present in person. Mr. Honeycutt? Present in person. Ms. Lawrence?
Present. Webaxing in.
Ms. Miller?
Present.
And Compton is present in person. All right. Item number one, discussion of possible actions to set date, time, and place. Meeting will reconvene any technical difficulties arise during the course of the meeting and cannot be corrected within a maximum of thirty minutes. Wednesday, May twentieth at eleven a.m. Second. Okay. All right. Motion is for Wednesday at eleven a.m. in V O C C room. If we have technical difficulties, they cannot be corrected within thirty minutes. Mr. Honeycutt moved and Mr. Lambert seconded. We'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Lawrence?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
And Compton is an aye. Item number two, discussion of possible action to receive an update from the emergency response committee. Mr. Barnes is here. Mr. Barnes, do you mind giving us an update?
I do not. I'm sure that walking down the hall with difficulty today. The committee has continued to meet in fact this week with some calls up in the DART, what you're gonna call it, for more full capacity of Oklahoma County. A couple of times this end of the day. All reports, all indications, information we're getting back from participants, both employees and even some discussions with some of our customers coming through, like officials, et cetera, as things are going very well. We've implemented multiple steps for traffic control, the real pedestrian traffic. Those are working well for us. Couple of speed bumps here and there. We've been able to adjust on the fly and make things go well. Mr. Honeycutt is a phenomenal thing coming out of Sheriff's Office, supporting the facility, creating along with Mr. Memorial Facility Maintenance. One thing I would make you aware of in a financial perspective that we are looking at, the personal protective equipment we're currently receiving from the Strategic National Stockpile officially the ninth week in overall. At my office, we're bringing that in and distribution to public safety and education. And that's also the source for the public, excuse me, personal protective equipment that we use in here in house. And this appears that it will be the last week for that. So we are staring right down the barrel of having to come up with funding and coming up with resources to bring in P P E for employees and for activity share of Oklahoma County and our facilities. That being said, we've been collecting numbers. Shantel's been very helpful and Greg has worked in my office, been working. Currently looking at one vendor in regard to some masks very similar to this one commonly called surgical mask. About fifty-five cents a piece, some shipping charges. Bottom line is we need to allocate some funding with those CARES Act money, whatever, when you come up with funding stream. So we can get a lot of these masks and keep them in stock here at Oklahoma County. We do not have good indications of what it will look like. We have research in the next thirty, forty-five days. And then we're looking again, possibility according to the help of the State Department of Resurgence again this fall and into winter. And if we experience in the recent event, a couple of months ago, we couldn't get them, very simply we're not available. Supply stream was a mess, both from the manufacturing perspective and transportation perspective, just simple availability. It was my recommendation to this group and to a member I need to speak with, that we try to identify a funding mechanism. We set aside substantial amount of money compared to this meeting for the purpose of P P E to keep in stock so we don't get caught behind the curve. Should we have a resurgence regardless of what that is. And also to carry us forward in the current situation, we're not finished with this yet. We have, for initial aspects, we've actually been exploring with the number of thirty thousand dollars to allow us at that rate to pick up this short fifty thousand. We've gone through in the last three days, four days, we've gone through approximately close to ten thousand. Some of those are still in the house, as all for example, to court. Presiding judge, we sent eleven hundred over there and I'm sure, I don't know the exact number, but I'd be surprised if there's a thousand, but it kind of varies. That would allow us to again pick up with this one vendor, should this remain in place, should some of the stars all come in alignment and we're able to make this particular purchase and get as close to fifty thousand. I do not necessarily, my personal opinion, I don't think that would suffice to carry us all the way into next year. If we see a resurgence with the reopening, things are going on and avoid resurgence in fall and winter. This would definitely put us in a good position for the current situation and turn around with this one vendor.
What's that price?
That price is forty-five.
From here to the end of the year?
I'm sorry.
From here to the end of the year?
Down here or this? I think if we double that by some consumption, I had some expectation. Part of what we're depending upon too is a lot of people come to Oklahoma County facilities with some employees at their station and they have it on that. One of the concerns we had is, excuse me, the first response is become mask central. Anybody and everybody for miles around while we're doing that. While providing that little service would be wonderful, it's not cost-stated and likely to counter indicated for a season. Yes, sir. Actually, I don't think so because it's under disaster preparation. There's been some use of gloves. I have fairly decent stock of gloves in place and also have some face shields. Face shields. I think the only place we've been using those is probably jail. That's likely. I don't know any other. I'm not sure if they're using it. Gloves would be, tank gowns, employee, they're either again maybe jail or medical patient.
Check, but so they may not. Am sanitizer, those types of things.
Yes, actually I haven't checked with him, but he and I have had discussions recently about three hours ago. And the current availability of the am sanitizer as well as the am acid liquid that I've been able to get, you know, that will be stopping as well with this Strategic National Stockpile doctors. I know he is looking forward to that and forward in terms of planning it. And I've also sent him information, the, I think the name of hypofores acid, you're currently using as a sanitizer. When it is basically atomized as in an aerosol spray, you're looking at ninety-nine percent of it, less than one percent actually of the material. Non corrosive, it's all natural, don't have to have a post cleanup, it's very effective in the equipment. I'm not sure that final price of that is very effective to purchase that equipment, keep it in house. And virtually have an endless supply of that now on. I can use the mop floors, it's currently used extensively in the food industry and food processing, food preparation. It's, I have actually tested it, I think it's a siphon when we had it early. It's just a slight bit stronger than any food order you've had. For now. Well, yeah, that's true. We won't go there. But again, having to build a new house to make that would be a very wise move for us at Oklahoma County. Like I said, on any surface or anything. And there are people, just came to us out of fire service and there are some other departments around who have set up an operation like this and they're making this stuff themselves. And again, when it's atomized and you're not drowning something, it's been successfully used, sprayed right on any kind of equipment. Or if they're using it in fire equipment and ambulances, they spray it in a matter of a minute, surface is virtually dry. So they're able to do right on after business of posting and hand the mop. Point is, I'm recommending to Mr. Memorial for search that, with the possibility of bringing that capability, absolutely same.
What's the manufacturing? You done my manufacturing ourselves, what wire, what's the cause?
It's minimal equipment, it's one batch if you will, it's something like just a gallon increments, that's what I looked at. I don't know the specifics of it, spreadsheet, but like I don't quite remember fortunately, I have special contact data, search and such for the spreadsheets. My understanding is a very simple process. Does that have a shelf life? Do you want to make value, value down?
I like where Miles is headed on the finish up the rest of the year. I know a lot of this is just a lag on your force as far as what we're gonna need, but you know, we saw supply chain issues at the beginning of this. And if we prepare ourselves to try to get through the end of the fiscal, or not fiscal year, the end of the calendar year, and we do see a resurgence. And we also see a slowdown in the supply chain. If we're making an order of then, we're not concerned as much about being a month or two month delay because we have such a quantity on hand, so.
Correct.
I think that's a good idea.
So all these things have a shelf life?
Yes.
I mean, even the masks have a shelf?
Yes.
The masks at the beginning, have they been stored or? Here's where I'm going, I don't wanna buy it.
Oh, sure.
I don't wanna buy all the shit. They should take it fully.
My understanding is these are new masks because manufacturing cycle has spun up and they're moving a lot of the manufacturing back to United States. You know, we were very much over the, uh, formations in that regard and that's spinning out back here. That's my understanding.
The shelf life, are we talking a year or more?
We take fifteen, I think it's two year. Two year, yeah. And they, it's likely going to vary with the manufacturing.
Are these masks similar to what I have on or are they the N ninety-five mask?
Uh, no, they are not N ninety-five, they're similar.
Would you suggest we hook it in ninety-five mask as well?
To be honest with you, the current indications from the big county health department know that N ninety-fives are more directed towards health care providers. They're in samples for actual testing. They recommend cloth masks or certain masks for, both common. I do have, they need fifteen thousand, fourteen or fifteen thousand. But they step up the protection for whatever reason, or we ran short surgical whatever, those certain. Personally, right now, based on the reading I'm doing, it's kind of carrying.
The high dot C. You said a scary word there, acid.
Yes.
That's scary.
Bleach stuff. Well, certainly it's recorded. And you use the word bleach and actually, right, it's like pouring, you know, less than one percent. I've only heard of one report, somebody talking about potential corrosive issue with that. And according to information I received in discussions about that, people saw it before. It goes back to what I said earlier, as long as you're not drowning something, apparently it's an overuse or could possibly react to something available. Using in addition to that. Again, the adunation of spray laws, not a straight stream, fog, that drives program.
Authorization of this break, money, expenditure. Chemical masks and whatever we can to December thirty-third. Have had any discussions coming to individuals on what they, what their stores look like, they may in the future. I mean, I know that law enforcement, I mean, they were primary to begin with, first response, I should say, or primary to secondary and then they, so they rolled in. I don't want those guys out on the streets without P P E, so.
Now, those numbers and what do you do?
Changing, how are you gonna predict? Kind of change obviously to jail, trust. Assuming they would like.
One other thing that you want to reach out to June on as well on?
I got.
Yeah, pull these out there and we need to make sure, I think our purview is more setting up, you know, some suggested guidelines and making recommendations on the purchases. Not necessarily the what you should do and shouldn't do, but in my mind, I think you would canvas the county as a whole and kind of assess that need. And if any of those needs are on top of what you've already included, then you just put that in. And whenever we have a process in place to receive requests for recommendations and whatnot, then you would have that ready to go and bring it, bring it to our group. I would be interested in the numbers to get through the end of the calendar year. I don't know if anybody else is of a different opinion. If so, let's let him know now, otherwise I think the number that I'm interested in bringing back is to get us through the end of the calendar year.
And as your, as your references, it is going to be somewhat of a wild estimation.
The mask in conjunction with past, if he purchased gifts for the end of the year with the pouring. I'm ready to get him to act because what we have found is that everybody can start to do purchases. If we have the ability to buy it now, we probably gotta get it done. And waiting a week, waiting for hours, all of that is costly when it comes to equipment that you have ready to rock. Somebody come in there, buy it right under people. So I mean, if we want to authorize, Mr. Barnes, concern about, authorize expenditures of a hundred thousand dollars. I, I, we're not, I mean, we can't authorize, we recommend the authorization.
Well, I appreciate your point and while I agree with it, I would ask, which agenda item do you think covers that? I don't, I don't even think three would authorize us to make a recommendation on a particular purchase.
Sure, since actions may include the unlimited two.
No, it's discussion of possible action regarding policies and procedures related to, and the, including the unlimited two is gonna relate back to the policies and procedures. This is a policy and procedure item. I don't, I don't think that a recommendation for funding would fall under, under that.
Maybe I would suggest, you know, as the emergency management even I didn't go ahead and ask budget board for it on, send the agenda on for Thursday. And just say, you've informed us, there was no pushback. You know, if, if we hear that we can't get into stockpile, you, you gotta, you gotta, this is a question. It's a good deal, I think.
Yes, it is.
There you go.
I, I agree. And I wouldn't limit it on your agenda item on what fund or whatever, because it may be something that we need to upfront, do that out of general fund reserve until we have everything set up. Make sure that everything's good to go. Well.
I disagree. Like the care box there, I think base map.
But Christie, there's an agenda item, there's an agenda item on budget board that would send every item before it's approved to the district attorney's office to have it signed off on prior to approval. My concern is if that agenda item is approved and his, his agenda item is specific to utilize CARES dollars. That item would not have been through the district attorney's office yet, so they may not be able to utilize that mechanism. So if he, if he has it structured broad enough that if we do run into that issue, we could utilize reserve funds, just like we've done so far, to move over and then do a reimbursement.
I just requested funding in general and let the cost synergy determine.
What I would hate is for, for Mr. Barnes to have the agenda item that's, that only mentions CARES funding to fund this. And then it get hung up in that meeting and not be able to move forward because for whatever reason, that project is not ready and able to be able to be approved utilizing CARES dollars. I mean, if I'm missing something, please don't.
What would be nice is on Thursday, a blanket to be put in place. So if it needs to come from general fund reserve or district rock, I, I don't see the issue with base maps and the stuff we're talking about, monetary, out of CARES.
I, I don't either.
And I, I just feel like we're boggling some of the initial things that I, I just don't see that was very clear in the guidelines for it to be used for.
Christie, I'm, I'm completely on the same page with you, but when the agenda was sent out and I looked at the agenda and I read that agenda item, that resolution, it doesn't say, it, it doesn't exclude items for the county such as P P E. It's all, all items that will be funded through the CARES must go through the district attorney's office for approval. That's my concern. If budget board wants to approve that resolution, that would tie their hands on being able to approve this item on Thursday. What about V O C C?
It's a V O C, yeah, I have a budget resolution.
Let me talk about.
It's on for V O C C on Wednesday and it's on budget board for Thursday.
So Christie, I'm in complete agreement with you. I, I think this is definitely something that can and should be funded through and we should have the ability to, to cut P O today and, and make those orders. But we've not established anything as far as guidelines, budget board hasn't adopted what they're going to do. And they got this additional agenda item that is extremely restrictive. And so if, if that restriction is put in place, David comes forward, he's gonna be stuck in the mud on Thursday and not be able to move forward until we have another meeting of some sort. Whereas if he had it more broad to where he could utilize reserve dollars, then if budget board determines that they want to implement that resolution and thus not appropriate CARES money towards this right now, there's still the other option to be able to use reserve dollars.
Your recommendation, I approach that as a hundred thousand dollars to your person.
There's no, there's, there is no recommendation and because we don't have an agenda item on here that would allow for that. The conversation that we've been having, I think, has been appropriate because it relates specifically to the policies and procedures that is currently in place or that may be in place in the future. But I don't think item three allows us.
I mean, clearly, I'd say a hundred thousand, I think people don't wanna, you know, keep it broad. They don't get tested. I mean, ultimately, come Thursday, it would be nice to budget for, grant somewhere, a blanket to be put in order and, or a blanket to be put in the system and P O done and the order done.
That would be phenomenal. I agree. I just don't know that.
You're just looking for the access procurement.
That way, if option one doesn't work, we still have option two. If option two doesn't work, option three, whatever it is, that way, that way it can happen and you can move forward on these types of purchases.
Clearly, if you wanna put in your agenda item, that'd be free. I don't see you having a problem.
I think I'll keep, for each generic, I'll start funding. In the budget, I have options in discussion. Sure, the CARES Act, just clearly a reimbursement until procedure verified. Question, do you have the update?
There's a motion to set to receive the update. Any other comments? I have a roll call vote. Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Lawrence?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
And Compton is a. Item number three, discussion of, thank you, thank you, Mr. Morrison. Discussion of possible action regarding policies and procedures related to the newly established special projects fund, fourteen hundred CARES Act. Actions may include, but not limited to, establishing a tracking mechanism for requests, development of guidelines, and receiving documents as necessary. Does anybody have any discussion? I think you did want me to reach out to Tulsa County and City of Oklahoma City. I was able to speak to both of them, so if I can give an update on that before we go any further, if you'd like. Okay, first I was able to talk with Terry Simonsen with Tulsa County. Spoke with him Saturday for over an hour. I really appreciate his time. We had a very, very good conversation. He's texted me multiple times since Saturday, asking me questions and giving me information. And one thing that he had mentioned, and Oklahoma City had mentioned this as well, that they would like to stay engaged with us throughout this process. Hopefully have kind of a uniform type approach through this, so they're willing and able to help us any way they can. And I told him that, you know, we get, I would get back with him personally, but I, I was sure that we would be willing and able to work with him to the extent we can. Kind of the specific part of the conversation we had, they're looking at four buckets. What our office had talked about was seven buckets, but their four buckets is the exact same as what our seven, where they just had a few things in a couple of the buckets. First, they got an internal bucket, which their health department is included in that bucket. And that was separate buckets that, that we were discussing in District One before. And I'll get kind of specific on the internal piece in just a minute, but they, there's an application. And there's a review committee and whatnot. I'll get into specifics on that in just a minute. Their second bucket is cities and municipalities, which is what we had talked about. There's an application there. They're also utilizing an agreement and an affidavit that must be executed. When I was talking to Terry, we kind of, he had some ideas on what that language was gonna look like. And we kind of had some, some more specific conversation and it was very, I think, helpful for him and for me for sure on that. But there would be an affidavit in there.
in there. The third bucket was nonprofits. When we talked about rental assistance for folks facing evictions, they are looking at that as well, but they're including that in their nonprofit bucket. So that's, that would, that's just part of one bucket. What they're doing on that bucket is they're working with United Way. And United Way, there's, there'll be an application, there's also the affidavit. They all have to fill out the application, all their buckets, and outside the internal, they all have to sign the affidavit. But United Way will be doing assessment and screening and running those traps because that's, they have the experience there. That was an interesting idea that we might be able to piggyback on. That agreement is not ready yet. He anticipated that it would be ready by the end of this week and he's going to share it with me once it is complete. Item number, the fourth bucket was the small business help that they're going to try to offer. Once again, there's an application process, including an affidavit. They are using the Tulsa Economic Development Corporation for assessment and screening similar to what they're doing with United Way on the nonprofit. I thought that was an interesting concept as well. These are, those are entities in Tulsa County that are doing this on a regular basis. They've got the knowledge, they've got the expertise, and they've got, they've got the personnel, or they've got the, the knowledge on who to get that can give them the information. So I thought that was very, very interesting. So those four come up with the, it's the same seven. The other one that our recommendation that we had mentioned before was holding some back for the county for the fall, and they're doing exactly that. They're holding, well, right now, what the plan is, they're holding 20 million back, which is roughly 17%. He said there was really no significance to the 17%. He was just comfortable with that amount, and they're holding that until Labor Day and be able to make some assessments after that. Part of the, the thinking there is there's concern that the state is not going to be able to get funding to the other cities, and they're, well, all the cities in, in their case, in their county, until the end of summer. And there very well may be cities that need money ahead of that. So they're, they're wanting to hold some money back to kind of see what the state comes back in on, on the backside and then have some money in case there's, there's more of a need. And then also, of course, their county need on the resurgence or miscalculation or whatever, they may need some more money in the fall. So that's what they're looking at. Said that when they're applying for projects, they're looking at projects that either provide protection, mitigation, prevention, detection, or precaution. They've kind of lined those out because those specifically, you can tie it back to a necessary expense related to COVID, which is one of the three requirements that we have to meet. Another thing that we had talked about from an auditing standpoint, and this is something where I wasn't going to commit the county, this board can't commit the county anyway, but one thing that we talked about that would be interesting is to make sure that we are good on the backend from an audit standpoint, was contracting with an independent auditor that would kind of keep an eye and periodically check some of the stuff that we were doing. And since that wouldn't be a huge job, because it would be just periodic, maybe Tulsa County and Oklahoma County could go together to procure the auditor, because that auditor would be looking at the same stuff there versus here, because we have the same applicable requirements with this money. So I thought that would be, it was an interesting idea. Let's see, back to the internal piece, that's really what they got going right now. They do have an application for cities and municipalities. That one's out there and going. I don't have that one yet. I should have that in the next day or so. I do have the internal application and I'll share that with, with everybody here in a few minutes. But what, what they're doing on the internal side is they're having, first of all, whenever they started, they told all their departments, go in, we've got, they got a, they call it COVID expense tracker form, and he's sending that to me as well. I've got most of this stuff, but it was in PDF, so he's going to send it all to me in Word. So if we want to utilize everything that they're doing, we can go in and just change whatever verbiage we want, which will be helpful. But anyway, what they did was they told all their departments, go back through until March the first and do your best to figure out what you think expenses were related to COVID. They're, they're coding them in their financial software system. I don't know. I'm sure Munis, maybe we can figure something out like that, but they've got a special code that's in for all of those, those items. And then that, that initial set of expenses, that's all reimbursable, because it's all money that's already been spent, goes to their review committee. They've got a review committee similar to ours, it's a different makeup, but it's a review committee that goes over the application. So all the applications are sent to Terry Simonson on Friday. Terry, all he does at that point is just make sure that the applications are complete. If they're not complete, he'll reach back out and say, hey, you didn't fill out question number four, or, or whatever, and then have them fix that. He then takes all of the completed applications to their review committee when they meet on, I think it's Tuesday is when their review committee meets. And they have the discussion about which items meet the requirements, what they want to make a recommendation of, of, of funding, and, and then it's going, in their case, they're taking it to the OCC. So after that Tuesday meeting, then it'll go to their BOCC, and they're doing weekly, a, a gen item on BOCC and a weekly, and they're scheduling weekly meetings for this review committee to be able to handle this on an ongoing basis. Did you say that your review committee was from Friday? It was the, the chairman of BOCC, Commissioner Peters, Terry Simonson is on there, and then the two, two deputies from, two of the commissioners. And the, and the, and the county clerk is on there as well. So that's, so that's why I was saying their makeup's a little bit different, and they're going straight to BOCC instead of budget board and then the BOCC, but it's, we have a, a different step in the process, but it's, it's roughly the same, same as what we could do. So then the recommendation goes to BOCC and they either approve it or deny it. And then if it's approved, then the clerk's office goes in and does the things that need to be done, so that POs can be cut and they can move forward. So that application, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but it's on their internal website. So if we did something like this, I, I asked Dane and he was certain that we could spend something up on info zones to where every department could go on, fill out an application, say what the project is for, which related to COVID and, and all of that, and then they would submit, submit those, and then we would look at them and make a recommendation. That was a pretty streamlined process. But anyway, the, the expense tracker form that I had mentioned, the, the advantage to that is they have an ability to go in and just because you coded it as an applicable expense, doesn't mean it's going to be approved, but real time, they can go in and see what all their departments have coded a particular way, so they see what the potential county liability is on the books at any given time. They can run a report, go in and see that, oh, we got, you know, $3 million that we may have to spend to this. So coding it and having it on that tracker sheet is, is the way that they're tracking all of that, to try to stay informed and not kind of caught off guard. Are they directly expensing it from the cares act or are they coming in with a different angle? No, it's, it comes directly out of the cares act money that the account that they put in, that's my understanding. And to Christie's point earlier, to me, that's, that's the best way. We don't need to, to keep proving and then, you know, reimbursing and paying out of one account and reimbursing from another account, because we're going to have departments that don't have the ability to make those kinds of purchases and then just seek reimbursement. I, I've just spoken with their assessor, they are doing some reimbursement on some of their orders, they already have funding available. Yeah, and that's what I was mentioning earlier, they had everybody go back to March the first and fill out the expense tracker form, code it and all of those. I don't think all their departments have responded with all the information yet, but the idea is they're going to get all of that to the review committee at some point. The review committee is thus doing two things. They're reviewing reimbursement items that have already been spent, and then they're also reviewing items that are future projects. So what I would caution, regardless of the process and procedure that we put in place, I would caution everybody not to go out and just make purchases because it sounds like it's a COVID-related expense. It very well may be a COVID-related expense, but it may not be an expense that the budget board and BOCC ultimately says, yeah, we're going to use cares funding to pay for that. Never ran a question with him with that, is you sure you're going to be reimbursed for that? So you go, yeah. But I would, no, I'm right there with you. That's why I asked. Yeah. It's a little more difficult on things that have already been spent, but moving forward, it's a, it's a good idea to, like we were mentioning with, with Mr. Barnes earlier on the equipment to produce the chemical cleaner, if he were wanting to move forward on that project, I would say, unless you plan on using your own dollars on that, don't spend anything on it until you bring that project forward and, because there may be an issue with budget board, they may not like that product, they may not want to go that direction and spend care dollars on it, so. Let me see if there was anything else from Tulsa County. That's, that's pretty much it. Talked to City of Oklahoma City.
On Tulsa before you move on. So their four buckets, they filled out 20 million. Have they assigned like a budget to those buckets? Or is it still just a pot of money for these four things? Does that make sense?
Yes, it, it does, and I think it's the latter right now. Not that it won't change down the road, but I think.
But he didn't come along and say we've assigned six million.
Right, no, I made for each. No, and, and I think doing that upfront without having the information, right, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to do that.
And then on the application, maybe not so much for the internal, did he talk about, maybe for the, the other three? Did the application, I think cities are out, open the others, did he talk about like a window open, like, hey, this window's open for 30 days or two weeks? And then he kind of closes, there might be another window? Or was it just, it's what it is, it's just managing those dollars and people ask, people ask, people ask, and then if you're the last one to ask, kind of thing, to where you can assess, like, close the window and get all those paid, pretty quick, not, not bog down the process by any means, but then, did he say anything about taking some windows or something?
No, he said with cities and towns, they basically told them, hey, if you want to apply, send your application in, just send it in. We don't know what we're going to do on that yet, but just send it in, fill everything out, sign the affidavit. That way, when we're ready to move on that, we got the information. Now, the, the window idea that you mentioned, I think is, that's a good idea. And I think that's where, where we're working together, Oklahoma County and Tulsa County, if we come up with good ideas like that and to help them improve their process and, and vice versa, they're going to see things and run into maybe an obstacle that we haven't seen yet, and if, if, if we're in constant dialogue, then maybe we can try to help each other not experience as much heartburn as we would if we were just working independently.
Did it come up, it may not have, did it come up with, you know, if a city puts in too much, but then they don't do it? Did they talk about any kind of sending it back to the county?
Okay, so, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because I wanted to be a little more specific on the affidavit. I was going to round back around to that. And when we talked about that language, there's, there's three overarching ideas that they have in there. First of all, that they're attesting that they have not been reimbursed for that expense. Secondly, that they will not seek reimbursement from anybody else related to that expense. And then third was indemnification language and responsibility of if, if they don't spend the money appropriately, that they will be responsible to the Treasury Department to make those funds whole. Terry said that they had a conversation with Senator Langford's office. Senator Langford spoke with, not the Treasury Department generally, but the Secretary of Treasury himself. And before that meeting, Senator Langford's office reached out to Terry and asked, was there anything specific that you wanted him to talk to the secretary about while they're there? And he said, hey, ask him about the affidavit, and the secretary said, told Senator Langford that that affidavit was good, that that would be, that would be the type of due diligence that they want. So. Those four buckets that you're listing from Tulsa, are those any priority? I'm guessing number one, are they looking at, are those most prioritized or? We didn't, we didn't speak specifically about the priorities, but my, my impression from the conversation was that bucket one was, of course, priority one, and then the others were going to be kind of as the cookie crumbles, you know? If the, if the state is able to move up the window and get cities and towns within those counties money quick, and it's, and they're able to fill the complete need of those cities and municipalities, then wherever they were on the priority list, automatically they, they moved either way down or completely off the list, because part of what they have to do is sign the affidavit whenever they receive the money, that they're not, that they haven't gotten the money from somewhere else. If they've already gotten it, then there's no need for that money to be there allocated for that bucket. So I think as we move along, we don't know what we don't know, so you don't, it's hard for any of us to prioritize those, I believe. But I do think that we've got to take care of the internal expenses and then the others, there's arguments on all the buckets about how, how important they are. And I think that's going to, those priorities are going to come down to your own individual viewpoints.
So you, in your discussions, did, did they comment, did Terry comment on whether their DA is way down on any of the projects they've contemplated or the entities they've contemplated getting related to?
Yes, he said that there was conversations and some concerns. As of now, I think they're moving forward. He did mention that they're, they're running some traps to try to find out, get a little bit more definitive response on what they can and can't do, not from the federal guidelines, but from, from the state. I think that is an ongoing conversation. I think that my impression is, if I, if I misspeak, well, I, I'm not even, they're moving forward. As of right now, they're, they're moving forward as if they can do everything that recognizes, but that could change.
Any issue they have there, it doesn't necessarily impact us here, it's just.
Right, but the interesting thing is that, you know, if we're all working together, we all have the same statutes, you know? We all have the, we all have the same federal guidelines that Treasury set out, whether those are too broad, too narrow, whatever they are, they're the same for everybody. And in the state of Oklahoma. And in the state of Oklahoma, the same statutes apply to all counties the same, with a few exceptions for, uh, population size, but those exceptions put Tulsa County and Oklahoma County in the same boat. So, we're going to, since all this stuff applies, uh, to both of us, that's where, you know, a lot of the conversation of us trying to, you know, structure and move kind of in the same direction, that would be, would be helpful.
But you didn't, you didn't hear them say, or they're not, their VA is not going to have it, like the resolution that's on there, that didn't, their VA isn't reviewing every-
Now, like I said, they're, they're moving forward, he said that their, their VA, uh, well, their ADA that, in, in their, um, office had some concerns about, um, about some of the statutory implications, but they've, they're moving forward based upon other legal theories that I think they feel fairly comfortable that they're okay to, to move forward with the buckets as listed. That's just my impression. I could be wrong, or I could be right now and their opinion changes, but- So, if there's anything else about Tulsa, then we move on to, uh, City of Oklahoma City, um, and there's really not a whole lot there to discuss. Um, they've got kind of a broad level plan that's going to be introduced on the 26th. Um, some interesting stuff, it was requested that, since it's still really early and that it's not ready to be made public yet, um, and so I assured them that I would respect that, but they are starting to design a plan. Um, and that was, I, I spoke with, uh, Kenny Sodell in the, uh, uh, he's the Assistant City Manager, so in the City Manager's Office. Also spoke with Bruce Lawrence, he's helping City of Oklahoma City, some staff, and JD was on the phone call, and so was Phil Maitsevich from City County Health, who had other conversations. Um, Dr. McGaw, um, I've had some conversations with him related to it. I, I think the biggest thing from City of Oklahoma City that I can mention right now in City County Health is, one thing they don't want us to lose focus on is testing, tracing, and isolation. Those are expenses that are real and need to be, uh, considered moving forward according to them, and they want us to, uh, really look at that. My thought on that is, you know, City of Oklahoma City, if they're looking at their population, then what can we maybe do as a county to help City County Health? It's been, uh, the same stuff that's going to be occurring inside City of Oklahoma City, but outside of those limits to be able to help the individuals that live in the other municipalities in the county as well as individuals that live in unincorporated, so, our serviceability, yes, yeah. And all, everything done the exact same way, just in different areas, but that way the public, everything's being done the same way, and it'll be less confusion, everybody's on the same page. Um, I think that would be, be beneficial. I do have another meeting with them, uh, next week, and I, I believe they're going to want to, from our last meeting, I think this is something that's probably going to be a weekly basis, um, that, that they want to get together and, um, and discuss some stuff. Um, the other thing that I think Phil Maitsevich, maybe it was Dr. McGaw, mentioned that we probably want to, uh, build in our internal bucket, looking at the Sheriff's Department for testing and for at the jail, the new arrivals at the jail, that, that those may be some, uh, things that we want to look at. And then also ACOG 911, their health data expenses and, and stuff that they're doing on their end, I think they've spun up some additional pieces at ACOG 911. So even if it's not from a, if they don't need funding for it, if it's just they're reaching out to make sure that we have the data that they have, would be important. Kind of what I have. Thank you for doing that. You're welcome, and I've got the, I've got the internal application that Tulsa County is utilizing, so I'll hand this out, and on my, looks like Amy's in her office, right?
Yeah.
On my way back to my office, I'll swing this by to you, that's okay?
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's get one of the clerks. Uh, if we wanted to, to do something similar, that's a good starting off point, and that's why I also asked for it in a editable format, that way any, if we do want to utilize something similar to that, we can make the necessary changes to it and not have to go in and recreate the wheel. Motion to receive the document. There's a motion, second to receive the document. Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
And Compton is an aye. So in addition to Mr. Simonsen, I mentioned that earlier, but Penny Sodell, Bruce Lawrence, JD, Phil Maitsevich, it was Andrew Boe from Harvard is involved in, uh, helping with some of the data stuff, I believe he was on phone call, and, uh, Dr. McGaw and some of the City County Health staff, they, um, they really helped and, you know, gave some good information, I really appreciate their time and everything, and they've all indicated, if not already scheduled, wanting to schedule future meetings, they indicated that they want all of us to stay involved, communicating throughout this process, and I think that would be helpful.
And people find that, right, also applies to the same, you're-
Right, and even on small businesses, you're going to have some small businesses that are located in both towns, so. For property owners, the same, yeah. One thing that I mentioned and, uh, intrigued Terry, I don't know, um, if they'll ultimately want to move forward with it, I mentioned it to Kenny Sodell at Oklahoma City, and he was very intrigued by the idea, you know, and I think I mentioned this the other day, but the state, I know they're spinning up a website where people can, you know, get information and have some data, that kind of stuff, and I, I know the affidavit will help us on the backend from an audit standpoint, but if we could spin up some type of real-time data that Oklahoma County, City of Oklahoma City, State of Oklahoma, and Tulsa County, that we all have real-time data that says who's applied for funding, which entity did they apply to, did they get the money? If they did, how much did they get? If they didn't, why didn't they? You know, maybe not all those questions need to be on there, but it, like, it's just something that I keep going back to in my mind, some central point that we could get the same information regardless of, and, yes. And if the, and if the state, if, if we can't get them to play, then maybe at least we can get the other three and all of us be on the same page and then just access the state's site, you know? And, I mean, it would be better if we were all able to, you know, utilize one system, but, you know, if we can't get the state to do it, even if it's just Tulsa County, Oklahoma County, and City of Oklahoma City, I think it would be, it would be helpful. And that being said, uh, our, our conversation, uh, that Terry had, you know, we were, at the, at the end, we're like, you know, we really should, and I had this conversation with Mike a couple of weeks ago, you guys had really reached out, had lots of conversations with the assessor in Tulsa County. We're so similar, you know, as far as the statutes that apply to us, the functions, Tulsa County has similar functions because, you know, sales tax, so they've got more money to deal with parts and that kind of stuff that we don't, but I don't, he was of the opinion that we should all be working more together, uh, in, in all facets and areas. Like I say, it's benefited for us just that communication line, nothing else. We've really worked hard this last year to establish that communication because, like you said, we're so similar. There's no reason that we can't have that communication line, have better than saying some policy or procedure that helps us make decisions as well. Right. Whether it's technology or just a simple, hey, well, and I know from project to project or whatever, we knew occasionally, I mean, Miles can remember when, uh, when Randy was still here, we had several conversations with Terry when we had the Jail Trust Committee still going, and that was a lot of very helpful information during that process. So that just doesn't really have anything necessarily specific to do with this, which is a, kind of a broad statement, we can, I don't help each other here, but in other aspects, I would-
They don't have, they don't have a window open, please?
No.
Clearly, they have a lot more money, a lot more-
Things will be coming up with, we're soon.
If, just to move forward, what if we kind of talk about seven categories versus four, and maybe kind of start our framework there, um, and kind of get that outline started? We've had both, it'd be nice when it starts, here's, here's what happens starting now. I mean, maybe give a report to Budget Board, obviously, unless they want to, you know, if they have a recognition, they vote on those categories, it's their blessing and we're supposed to.
Okay, before we get, so since we're kind of transitioning from the-
Report-
The report of, so let's go ahead and get a, a motion to receive the report, and then we'll move into potentially specific items that we may or may not-
I would be happy to, I know we've received the document, I would be happy to take a motion that we receive the report, um, for City of Oklahoma County.
And Miles as well, sorry.
Yeah.
I know it was a little limited, but still.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll report.
We got a motion to receive the reports, is there a second? Second? Okay, motion is second. Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
And Compton is an aye. Okay. Christie, the floor appears.
I know you were careful when you started talking about Tulsa buckets, that number one, their internal and their health, where at first you were, you were meaning, or you had talked about the seven, those were split. I'm trying to remember what the other, uh, you had rental assistance separate from nonprofits, didn't you, from that, your other split?
Yeah, our seven were internal cities and municipalities, this isn't in any particular order. Um, nonprofits, small business, rental assistance, and then, I'm sorry, we had, we had nonprofits and small business in the same one, and then we had, uh, hospitals and clinics, City County Health Department, and then the reserve, just a whole mechanism. And their, um, their hospitals and clinics and that kind of stuff would be under their small business, so. Did you talk about your seven when you had your discussions with them on their four bucket items? Yes. Okay. Did any of those, the hospitals, fall into any of one of their four? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, um, they were looking at all of that stuff being lumped into small business, small businesses, the smaller clinics and that kind of stuff in small businesses, and then eviction protection, utility assistance, that kind of stuff, uh, the more individual help that, uh, that folks will need would go through the nonprofit bucket.
Tulsa, though, they covered everything we covered, just much detail at one level. So, thinking way in the future, do you need to know, uh, the records, the records are still there, even if you had internal, we could always find out what's in. I do like rental assistance under nonprofits, because if you go that route, they're sending it to nonprofits for that purpose.
And the one thing that I did ask, um, that I didn't mention earlier, as it related to nonprofit and small business, so whether it was United Way or the Tulsa Economic Development Corporation, I asked them, so, United Way comes to you and says that we got, um, these particular needs and it's all kind of broken down, and then there's a lump sum. Is the county going to, if it's approved, are they going to cut the big lump sum to United Way, or are they going to do the smaller amounts to the individuals? Now, on the individuals, it wouldn't necessarily go to John Q. Public, if it was a rental assistance, it would go to the person that the money was owed to, right? And he said that they haven't worked all of that out yet, whether they were going to do one lump sum or a bunch of smaller checks, um, but that's, that's the route that they're utilizing, I think that's something that we would want to definitely, I, I think there's pros and there's cons to both of those, whether you have one entity that you just send all the money and then let them distribute it, or you do it, you know, on a, on a piecemeal basis, uh, you just get the, the assessment from United Way, for instance, and then you just send it. I kind of think that if you're having an affidavit signed and they're doing the assessment and all of that, it kind of makes sense to me, without doing any kind of in-depth analysis, on the surface, it seems to me like it would make sense just to send that entity the money because they're already signed off on the affidavit, that they're, they're the ones saying that this is right and they're responsible, so I would think that the money would then still be possible on their end, whereas maybe there's some gray area if we're just taking the information and then we're sending the money out to the citizens, whatever. So, I think that's something we need them all around, but-
I think there at the end, you do have to give funds back. Would United Way send it back to, uh, the police agency, or United Way send it directly to the Treasury? I don't think the Treasury will want that.
No, I think-
It's like, we gave you Oklahoma County money, you want it to December 31st, the sun, and books are closed, and whatever, reporting time, then you're final.
Yeah, and I think that would be in the agreement that we would have, if, if we utilize the same system that Tulsa County has, and let's just for argument's sake, since they're utilizing United Way, let's just use United Way as an example, if United Way came and said, this is, this is what's needed, and for some reason it, they didn't wind up needing all of it, then that's something that we can spell out in the agreement, that any, any money that weren't spent, that weren't needed to be spent for this purpose will be returned to the county so that the county can then do either one of two things, reallocate it somewhere else, or send it back to Treasury after December 30th because it was not needed. Andy, did you have something?
I was just thinking, setting this up in our financial system, if we had buckets within this bond- within this bond, you know, we could set up a separate cost center for each bucket. And even if we wanted to go into more detail, then we could set up like sub-departments, like for rental systems, hospital clinics within if one of the buckets. So kind of thinking through that. So if you want to have seven separate, you could always set up some sub-departments within one.
I like the product. I get everything.
No, no, I, we were just looking at what needs to be. So if you fold those into a broader bucket, that, I see the utility there. I mean, it's, right. And when, when we brought those seven ideas forward, it wasn't necessarily that those are seven exclusive ideas. It's interesting, though, that after talking with Tulsa, and then having a conversation with City of Oklahoma City, then it appears like there's, there's kind of some agreement in, in what those, those ideas are. But it doesn't mean that we're not missing something, right? And whether that's another broad category, or whether that's something else to put into the subcategories. But here's something interesting, though. If we do the broad category, and say you have somebody like United Way in Tulsa's case, managing the nonprofit side, that nonprofit is probably going to have a better idea of what some needs are out there than we don't necessarily know. So that's stuff that they can bring to us when they're doing their, their assessment.
So would then they, would they charge us for their services? Or, I mean, how would that work? Would we take the initial ask and kick it to the United Way and then kick it back to us? Or would they go through the United Way and as like a referral source, then they would refer it to us? Like, they might refer out some others, the other, you know, nonprofits that they deal with?
Yeah, I, first, I mean, and I know you weren't implying this, but just for the record, I want to make sure that I'm not recommending a particular entity.
No, I know. Right.
But we're, we're using, I, I, right. I don't think that, that that's ironed out yet. I think that gets back to the, say, United Way goes to Tulsa County and says, you know, we've, we've identified $50,000 worth of eviction need.
Right.
$20,000 of utility assistance, so much here, so much here. My question was, okay, so are you going to have the county cut out those individual checks, whether that's to another nonprofit or, you know, such and such landlord company, you know, that owns the, the property that, that the eviction is filed on? They didn't have, Terry didn't know exactly where they were going to go on that. And I think that's kind of what you're getting at, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think there's merits to both ways, whether there would be a fee for service to the umbrella, whether it was United Way or whoever.
Right.
I'm sure there would be. I don't know that for sure, but I believe Terry said that that was something that they were going to be paying United Way. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I seem to recall that. I didn't write that down. But that will be in the agreement. All of it will be in the agreement whenever I get it, which should be Wednesday, Thursday, maybe Friday. I should have that this week. And that would spell that out. But I would anticipate there would be an expense to have them do all of the assessments and screening and all of that. I do like leveraging those strengths, though. I think that that just brings more to the table, so that we have better insights on what the needs are.
Opening up.
Yeah. Yeah. Otherwise, we're recreating the wheel, not that of leveraging those community partners that are already out there that are experts in, I heard. And I, I didn't ask Terry why they chose United Way, but probably because they're the, I mean, they've got broad reach, they got law, exactly. So that's why I'm sure they're utilizing.
That helps.
Exactly.
Being able to contact every, those that provide.
Yeah. Which is extremely beneficial. Especially, like I said, we, there's, there's bound to be stuff out there that we're just not going to think of, because we're not there seeing it on a daily basis, or they are, or they know somebody that is, that, you know, that sees it daily. I mean, I'm, I, I think, first and foremost, the county, I know there's, there's already been expenses that have been incurred that are reimbursable to the general fund or special revenue, wherever the money was spent. I definitely think that, I would love to sit here right now and say, let's recommend these, these broad categories. I would love to do that, if, if it's, if it's the time and everybody's willing to do that. And I say that based upon these other conversations. It seems like everybody is kind of honing in on those same areas. But I definitely think we need to, in the very, very, very near future, move forward on what is this process going to be like for the internal county departments, so that when folks like Mr. Barnes need $60,000 to purchase DPD to get through the end of the year, we've got a process in place so we can say, hey, on Tuesday, bring that to us. We're going to, we're going to vet it and make a recommendation or not. But if, if we make a recommendation, we're going to make a recommendation with Budget Board, and Budget Board will have a meeting that following whatever day, and then it'll go to VOCC. That way, it's, we've got it down, and everybody can start getting that stuff down.
Things are becoming timely. We do that.
They are. Well, and here's something else, Danny. If, if we wait, well, I guess we have until September, but if we don't reimburse in a timely manner these general fund expenses, then we won't be able to budget those for the next fiscal year. We could wind up getting that stuff all tied up until the next fiscal year, right?
That is correct. If it's not done by September.
Right.
Great point.
And I mean, we do have some time until September, but that's something to kind of think about. And these, there's going to be some large expenses. So not only is it, let's have it done by September, so it's not tied up, but it's also, let's have it done way before that. That way, when we start having our budget deliberations, we have a better idea of how much of that money is going to be available to be budgeted for September.
What if we were to, this is just my idea, I'm not making a motion. Us meet again this week, we all look at the applications to Tulsa, come in with any changes. I guess the next thing, you know, the application, where is it, where is it going to? I don't know if that means you're the clerk to get on the agenda. I would say, start thinking about, you know, our meetings are normally, our regular meetings are normally on Tuesday. We start every Tuesday. Our budget board that's used to meetings, you know, Thursday at 10:00, they start meeting. I only wonder if that, that window's too small, if we next need to meet. I try to avoid Fridays, especially for all the elected officials. So maybe we move ours to Monday. That'll give enough time by Thursday, then, and then you're looking at maybe, you know, the Thursday before. It's a, it's a thing, I like the timeline, and everyone knows what's happening, when we're meeting. It gives everyone in the county knows when to get stuff turned in.
How much time after Budget Board, how much time do we need if Budget Board makes a recommendation to then get it on the twain's for VOCC?
If Budget Board makes it on a Thursday, it can get on the next Wednesday VOCC meeting.
I was more concerned about, we make a recommendation and then you meet in on the budget.
No, I agree, but I was, I was looking at the next step as well. Is there a way we could have where we meet on, say, a Thursday, to make, to make recommendations, and Budget Board meets on Friday to hear the recommendation, and then be ready for VOCC that following Wednesday? That's kind of what I was.
It's just whatever we recommend, have that time to get on it. It wouldn't be us meeting Thursday.
You, if you have a standard item on Budget Board.
If you have your private, turn that, use it privately.
But it starts with like an attachment on and.
That's the way we've been flawed with all these other meetings. So.
Yeah, I was just thinking, from a scheduling standpoint, how we can, because we got that extra step. So what can we do to make sure that it's timely? But we also, I think, I don't know about you, but I want to be able to, once we make a recommendation, we need a clear mind to be able to move on to the next set of stuff that's going to come in.
So the idea is, if we make a recommendation, it goes to Budget Board, and then it goes to VOCC?
I think that's the way it is.
And then where in that process, would it then go to the DA's office, per the resolution tomorrow and next week? So that could be a time consuming process.
Here's what we could do.
After they had their little, you meet Friday, don't have those establishments. Their calendar.
If it does go, if it does fall out, it would go, we'd make the recommendation. Or, or what, what I was going to suggest is, if you have a deadline to where everybody has to, to turn in their requests by Thursday, and if everybody submitted them, and I'll just, if everybody submits them to Terry, so I'll just use myself as an example, if everybody submitted their applications to me, and all I'm doing is just making sure all the boxes are checked, everything's done, then, then I would package, take them up to the DA's office, and say, here's this week's set that's going to go on. Because there's no sense in us spending a whole lot of time. If, if the DA's office, if it's Budget Board and VOCC pass that agenda item, then there is no point in this group spending a whole lot, spending any time on applications that the DA's office isn't going to approve. So I would say, the applications come in, and I can take them up to the DA's office, DA says yes or no. The ones that are no, I just can pull out, the ones that are left. We have our meeting, you know, whenever, but how long is it going to take the DA's office to review those? Right? So if, there are, there's some moving parts there, but I think if that passes, I would rather the applications be examined to make sure that they're complete, then submitted to the DA's office before it comes to this group.
That's assuming that.
That's assuming that that's the policy. If that's not the policy, then what we would do, in my mind, is you have a deadline, like what Tulsa County did, for applications to be submitted, and then we meet all of those. And it would be the same thing. They, they would send them, you know, in the example that I gave, I could look and make sure that they're all completed. They are, just bring them all. And then, those of you that have been on the community support grant teams before, you just take the packet, everybody looks at the packet, we discuss it, make sure that whoever has requested funding is available to be here. That way, we can ask questions if we need to. And then we take them, individual, application by individual application, and then say, we meet on Monday, we send it to, if there's a standing Budget Board meeting on Wednesday or Thursday, they're approved, and then they're put on for VOCC. And you know what? I guess if we're calling special budget boards every week to be able to do that, if we need to, we could, we could look at a special VOCC to meet two days or three days after when Budget Board meets. Because I don't know, and maybe it's, maybe I'm making a mountain out of a mole, but if, if Budget Board meets on Thursday, and we've got those expenses that need to be handled and taken care of, then we're waiting Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, before it gets on the VOCC to be able to be approved, and then it's you guys to be, check, cut.
What if we, what if we decide to meet again? I'll talk to our, if you do have VOCC meetings every Wednesday, so maybe try and work around that.
Work backwards. Yeah. That's why I was asking, Danny, how much time?
They don't want to meet Monday and Wednesday.
Right. And that's why I was asking, Danny, how much time do they need to be able to, after Budget Board approves and wants to send it on to VOCC, how much time do we need? Because then, however many days that is, we have Budget Board fixed here, I'm sorry, we got VOCC fixed at the endpoint of Wednesday, and then however many days they need, we move that many back, and that's when the special Budget Board meetings occur. And then we move back from there for our meeting, and then we move a day or two back from there for the deadline. How much time?
If we did meet on a Friday, they got approved on a Friday, they could be available on Wednesday's VOCC. I mean, that's kind of crunching at the.
Budget Board.
Well, he had mentioned Friday earlier, so I would think Friday would be a claim at four to plus.
If VOCC is going to approve a claim on a Wednesday, then it would have to be at least the prior of Friday.
Then you're back at Budget Board on Wednesday.
Yeah. So that may be.
That's what I'm thinking.
And then we could either meet on, I like just doing the Tuesday, because there's so many other meetings. I wanted to call this meeting for yesterday, last week, but I started looking at the calendar, and the clerk's office had so many meetings already yesterday. I didn't want to, there were a couple of time slots that we could have gotten in, but you guys would have been just slammed. So maybe if we stay on Tuesday, we stay on Tuesday, and then applications, or whatever we do, would be due the prior Friday.
It'll seem, it'll seem fast when it gets going. You know, right now, people are like, I incurred that on March 2nd, you know. But once it, once it does get going for county purposes.
So you anticipate needing additional agenda items than what we have on here? Because we could either recess this meeting at the end until Thursday or Friday to have further discussions, or I can call it a special meeting. So let's, we can, we can discuss that, I guess, when we get down to the. Know what everybody kind of wants, if you take some time to think about everything, come back later in the week, or do we want to recess until Thursday or tomorrow afternoon? I don't know if we have enough time, but that way we could have an agenda item on for Budget Board this Thursday. I don't, I don't know. I don't want to, to try to be so expedient that we also have a rush product, right?
I think we decide tomorrow, but not, give us enough time to put it on Thursday's budget.
Well, we could do like what, what Miles said. Well, we could do like what, what Miles had mentioned a second ago, is just put a, an agenda item on for Budget Board, a discussion, possible action to approve, recommendation from BET regarding COVID-19 policies and procedures or whatever.
There's no report, no action at that time.
Is that a recommendation? Go ahead and put the item on Budget Board for Thursday.
I mean, are we going to? Yeah. Regarding policies and procedures. So if we, if we decide on policies and procedures, then we would then get Budget Board sign off on those. I just don't know if we're going to have any room for this Thursday. Because I, I don't, I've had enough time to kind of look at this and, and stuff, but I, I don't want to rush everybody else and. So we just have a discussion, possible action to receive an update and/or a recommendation from BET regarding. I'll get with Kelly and Danny. Related to item number three here. Are there any other specific discussions on this? We can get back into the discussion of when we're going to meet again to have further discussion later. Okay. Uh, if there's no other discussion, let's get a motion to receive, see the information. Discuss. We did that for.
Oh.
Mine. To receive the updated information. Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson? Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert, or Lauren, I'm sorry?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Calvin is not. Your wife's not media check.
Yeah, definitely.
All right. Item number four, discussion of possible actions to discuss times and dates for future special meetings to develop a specific schedule for BET to meet regularly. Put this on here, I, I talked to Kelly, um, don't really want to do the, just continuing the meetings. I don't, that makes it very difficult on the clerk's office. One thing that the emergency response committee has done, and I think it's worked fairly well, is they'll have a meeting scheduled for the week and then recess throughout that week to meet as needed. But by the end of the week, they're, they're adjourning or, yeah, you finish it, it's done, and then you have your new meeting starting that next week. So that's kind of what, what I envisioned us.
Would you be open to, if it's broad enough, recessing this one for this week? And then while we talk, come back and we'll have input on the application and input on that time? Then we can set the price for the follow-up.
Yes. I think that would be the appropriate way to handle it at this time. Assuming we recess and not adjourn, we'll have, uh, further conversations related to item number four.
Thank you. Each person for this application, we're all going to go over it and discuss collectively.
I would say that initially is first just checking what you're saying Terry does.
Right.
He's not making any decisions, the recommendation, he's just looking, please, in the meeting with the answer.
I mean, it's.
Then to the DA, and then it will hit our agenda where we will look at it.
I really am, as far as us looking at their agenda and maybe updating it with our information. Are we all going to participate in that? Are we going to point someone on this?
Oh, I figured we'd all look at it.
Yes.
Get it, come back this week.
Okay. And here's, what I kind of thought was.
There's the change.
Yeah. Um, Terry should have me in editable form the next day or so. So once I have that, then what I thought is we'd come back and any changes that we would have made to it, it can be made to that editable form and then with everybody's input to make sure that it's something that is a recommendation from the entire group and not, not just one person working it out. And I'm happy to make the changes, but I don't want to make the changes independent of everybody else's.
Right.
I'm hoping Friday.
Thursday afternoon, there's planning commission. I believe, I have it on my calendar, at 1:30 to 2:30. So we could, we could plan on 2:30 Thursday. Friday morning, I've got, I've got something in the morning, another meeting here. And then Miles, do you know that, well, the emergency response committee has been generally recessing and meeting around noon? So I would, if we did Fridays, it would probably need to be in the afternoon. So this 2:30 Thursday morning for everybody. Okay. Does anybody anticipate wanting to put an additional, I'm not asking what it would be, but an additional agenda item for discussion? Because if so, then we would need to adjourn this one and create a new meeting to put an additional agenda item on. Discussions that we've had thus far, I think this agenda is perfectly sufficient to be able to just reset.
I would think what our next step to accomplish the internal application and then setting those dates or, or recommending, I think those are, which is the bottom of your number three unless I'm, you know.
I agree. And I, and I don't anticipate needing anything additional, but I just wanted to bring that up in case somebody wanted to, but something, okay. If not, let's go ahead and go to board comments and then we'll get recess action during that. All right. Ms. Martins?
Uh, thanks for taking the time to collect all this information.
Mr. Morrison?
Uh, like you said, I think the more uniform we can be, better be for us. Although, um, that's just, that's policy.
Mr. Davidson?
Thanks.
Mr. Lambert?
I echo that. Thank you for all your research and time you spent talking to Tulsa County.
Mr. Honeycutt? Ms. Warren?
No comment.
Ms. Miller? All right. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate all the dialogue. Very helpful. Hopefully we'll be moving forward soon. All right. Is there a motion to reset? I think I heard earlier Thursday at 2:30. Is there a motion to reset until Thursday at 2:30 in VOCC? Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
And Compton is not. We are in recess. Thanks, everyone.